All right, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. Thanks to everyone for coming out. We do have agendas that are over there where Colby's standing and grabbing one of. What a great example. Thank you. There's the podium. So go grab one if you guys don't have one already. Okay, so first up on our list, we have recognitions, and our first one is to proclaim Tuesday as Patty Johnston Day. Do we have representatives here?
I do.
All right.
Can I fill you in?
Sure.
Are you starting?
No, if you guys want to introduce the topic, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
All right. My name is Kathleen Morgan, and I am the Director of Development and Community Partnerships at Lawrence Public Library. Patty Johnston is one of our valued employees, and as of today, this very day, she is celebrating her 45th anniversary of working at Lawrence Public Library. So she started a couple of months after the new library on Vermont Street opened as a college page, and has been there ever since. She started as our director, no, actually, she started, she said, straightening magazines and doing home delivery for the library, and eventually became head of circulation, and then our senior outreach coordinator. So, we did a little research and discovered that Patty is the longest-serving employee in the 113-year history of Lawrence Public Library. So, she is on the road today, going to a family Thanksgiving event, but we're kind of doing this in secret, and then on December 1st, there'll be a special reception, and we will present the proclamation to her. But we thought it was appropriate that her day today was Patty Johnston Day.
Excellent.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then.
Great.
Whereas Patty Johnston began her service at the Lawrence Public Library exactly 45 years ago today, on November 21st, 1972, and whereas Ms. Johnston's first library job was as a college page, and in January 1979, she rose to the position of Director of the Circulation Department, and in 2001, she became the library's Senior Outreach Coordinator. And whereas Ms. Johnston has served to the Lawrence community in numerous other ways, including volunteering as a member of the Senior Resource Center of Douglas County Board, the Lawrence Douglas County Advocacy Council on Aging, the Douglas County Food Policy Council, and is a graduate of the Citizen Journalism Academy. And whereas Patty Johnston's 45 years of work at and for the Lawrence Public Library make her the longest-serving employee in the 113-year history of Lawrence Public Library. Now therefore, I, Leslie Soden, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim Tuesday as Patty Johnston Day in the City of Lawrence.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
There we go. And so, we're going to be presenting it to her next week.
That's right.
Excellent.
December 1st at 8:30.
Okay. I'll be there.
Thanks for taking time out of your schedule today for this. It's an exciting day for us, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So, next up, we got proclaim the month of November as National Home Care and Hospice Month.
That's me. I'm Cynthia Lewis. I'm the CEO of Douglas County Visiting Nurses. Home care is a valued method of healthcare for many people, as it allows them to stay in their residences with their families and their loved ones. Visiting nurses has been providing that type of care for 48 years in this community, since 1969. We are the not-for-profit, Medicare-certified home care agency based in Douglas County, but we represent more than 12,000 agencies across the nation who provide in-home skilled care, nursing care, therapy, social work, and other services. As our population ages, and people are more empowered to participate in their own care, home care is an economic and psychologically appealing manner for patients to recover from an acute episode, manage a chronic illness, or transition to end-of-life. In the past year, visiting nurses has provided more than 61,000 visits to upwards of 1,300 individuals in our community. Some are short-term, such as in-home rehab to work toward outpatient therapy following a knee replacement. Others are under our care longer, with wound care or chronic disease management needs. On behalf of VNA's 110 staff, I thank you for your recognition of their service to our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your service. All right, well, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then. Whereas home care services provide high-quality and compassionate healthcare services to more than 5 million Americans annually, especially in times of community or personal healthcare crisis, allowing an alternative to hospitalization or other institution-based forms of healthcare for acute and chronic illnesses. And home care is the preferred method of healthcare delivery among the disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals eager to live independently in their own homes as long as they can, allowing for greater health, dignity, comfort, and families to stay together. And whereas 2 million everyday heroes, including nurses, therapists, aides, companions, social workers, dieticians, chaplains, volunteers, and administrative staff, work tirelessly to provide professional support to millions of Americans in need of quality health services. In Lawrence, Douglas County Visiting Nurses Association has been doing so since 1969. Now therefore, I, Leslie Soden, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim the month of November as National Home Care and Hospice Month in Lawrence, and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about home care and hospice for the elderly, disabled, and infirm. Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Good to see you. All right, so now, we're going to proclaim Saturday as Small Business Saturday.
Thank you so much. I'm Sally Sakrai. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Lawrence Inc., and we are also celebrating our 45th anniversary this year, just like Patty Johnston, so I hope we'll last a long time. Small Business Saturday, held the Saturday after Thanksgiving, is a holiday shopping tradition and nationwide movement that helps bring attention to the importance of supporting small businesses in communities across America. Downtown Lawrence Inc. is a Small Business Saturday Neighborhood Champion, one of more than 6,700 across the country, who rally their communities with events and activities on the day. Through their own promotional efforts and customer outreach, small business owners generated an estimated $14.4 billion on Small Business Saturday in 2016. In 2016, 112 million people came out to shop on Small Business Saturday. Shopping local is important for a healthy community and local economy. Local downtown business owners are here 365 days a year, providing goods, services, and excellent personalized customer service to our community and the tens of thousands of visitors who come to Lawrence each year to stay, play, shop, and dine. Lawrence has just been named one of 2017's Top 25 American Towns for Holiday Shopping by Expedia. In the article, Expedia monitored over 3 million social media posts and honed in on conversations relating to local shops and holiday markets to determine the 25 best towns for holiday shopping in 2017. Lawrence stood out on this list, not only for shopping, but also for events such as our upcoming Fourth Annual Winter Wonder Weekend on December 2nd and 3rd, which is another event designed to increase and retain visitor traffic and spending this holiday season. National honors and accolades such as this, and our Yelp designation as the number-two city in the country for finding the best local gifts in 2015, show what a critical role our local small businesses play in the ambiance and appeal of our city as a whole, and help create a powerful draw and attraction for visitors. Shopping small and shopping local on Small Business Saturday, as well as every other day of the year, is a great way for people to help their friends and neighbors. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together.
Excellent. You know, when I came here tonight, I was wondering if I needed to say something about Small Business Saturday, but I saw this was already on the agenda, so I was really glad. But yeah, it's really important for everyone to shop local for their gifts and go downtown and buy from local people.
Yes.
And then, of course, Tuesday is Giving Tuesday.
Giving Tuesday.
That's a new, kind of a new tradition.
Yeah. It's been about five years now, so...
Yeah, that's to support your nonprofits.
Yes. And there's a great link on Explore Lawrence social media and their Facebook, and on their website, listing all kinds of great organizations, community organizations.
Excellent. Yeah. But first up is the Small Business Saturday.
Yes. After the Santa rescue. You will be with me for the first time.
I will. Yeah, first time.
We might have a Santa hat for you to wear.
I'm not Santa on the roof.
That's okay. Everybody can wear a Santa hat on Santa rescue.
Okay, good. I was going to say, that looks dangerous up there. Okay, so I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the City of Lawrence recognizes the value and importance of small businesses to the local, regional, and national economy, and whereas Downtown Lawrence Inc. participates in the nationally-recognized Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November 25th, in an effort to encourage residents to support the local business community first as part of their annual holiday shopping traditions. And whereas Downtown Lawrence Inc. and the City of Lawrence are both working to create an environment which is fun and festive for the holiday shopping season, we look forward to many holiday events, including Santa's Rescue atop Weaver's Department Store and the Downtown Holiday Lighting Ceremony. Additionally, we welcome the Lawrence Old Fashioned Christmas Parade and the Winter Wonderland Weekend, both during the weekend of December 2nd. Now therefore, I, Leslie Soden, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, do hereby proclaim Saturday as Small Business Saturday, and encourage all the citizens of Lawrence to shop small and support local downtown events and businesses this holiday season. Punctuate that with several confirmation points. Thank you.
And who here has a dog?
I have, I have two dogs.
You have two dogs.
But I'll stick one. Thank you.
They all the, we had our mixer on Wednesday, and my merchants cleaned me out.
Thank you.
Do you need one for your bird, too?
Yes.
The bird who makes you laugh.
For the parrot, that would be great. Thanks.
You have a dog to see. Okay. And who in, oh, you do, you have a dog. I got two more. I know you have two.
Hey, I have one more, though. I don't need both of them.
Okay. Everybody come. We are planning all kinds of fun for you downtown.
Pop this up.
Yeah, yeah.
Kurt, does that show up?
Um, sure.
Thanks, Kurt. I guess I could make it as a cape right here on the top. I don't know. I feel pretty strongly about this, so I'm taking my time. As a small business person myself, it's important. All right, so now, we're on to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been polled will be limited to three minutes for comments. Is there something that a member of the commission wishes to remove? Is there something that a member of the audience wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, so hearing, no exceptions. We'll add claims in the amount of $5,330,732.08 for a total vendor count of 209, and we do have one payment over $1 million to Garni Companies, and that's regarding the Wacarosa Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Move approval, Mayor.
Second.
So, motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so now, we're on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda. After first being recognized by the mayor, each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss, debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on the items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments, questions to the commission. So, is there anyone here that'd like to speak for public? Come on up, sign in, and tell us what you think.
Hello, my name is Adrian Malat. I'm a retired physicist. As a representative of the Lawrence Alliance for Responsible Lighting, I would like to comment on the progress on our wish to have the city require Westar to use streetlights and security lights below 3,000 K and do other things to reduce health and safety damage from new lighting. We have read the response of the city's staff. The response essentially repeats talking points made by industry and includes copies of documents provided by Laurel and industry at earlier meetings. The health recommendations of the American Medical Association made in 2016 are based on hundreds of peer-reviewed scientific studies going back to the mid-'80s. The staff seeks a fair and balanced attitude with the claims of the National Electrical Manufactors Association and the Illuminating Engineering Society, whose advice on medical matters they seem to put on a par with the American Medical Association and hundreds of biologists who have been doing research on lighting effects. They ask, how much blue light does it take for bad health effects? The AMA doesn't say. I have a long memory, and this reminds me of something we heard half a century ago. How many cigarettes does it take to cause lung cancer? Daylight 4,000 K lights are claimed to produce better seeing, but we have seen no evidence beyond mention of an upcoming conference talk by someone. We know, however, from basic physics, that bluish lights produce worse glare and produce problems during fog and for people with cataracts. Note that we are not asking much. We are not asking the city and Westar to tear out all the 4,000 K lights they have put in, as they are doing in Davis, California, and other places. We are merely asking that henceforth, they use 3,000 K and below, and instruct Westar to do so, as specified in Prairie Village, who says they are happy with that decision. Here is a draft, I will hand this to you, a draft of a possible ordinance. Henceforth, all street, task, and security lighting installed in or owned by the City of Lawrence, including Westar lights, shall have light sources with correlated color temperatures preferably at or below 2,700 K, but in no case greater than 3,000 K. Lighting shall be no brighter than 50 lux, the brightest being for street lights. Lights shall be directed downward, and I give some angles, which I don't need to repeat, but basically, the idea is to have the lights like this, rather than going out horizontal.
Thank you, Adrian. So, you're going to hand out our, this draft ordinance.
Yeah, I have a copy of basically what I just said, and a copy, which I think I gave you before, but I'll do it again.
Perfect.
Of the Prairie Village.
Okay. Yeah, we've gotten a lot of complaints with that, so I've been wondering if we need to work on it. Brandon, what's the latest on that? Isn't, is it you or Chuck that I should be asking?
Agenda says that we won't debate matters that are on public comment.
Well, I wasn't debating them. I was just seeing what the latest from staff was, because I know this has been back and forth for a couple of months now.
It could be referred back to an agenda at a future date.
There was a city managers' report item, I think, on the meeting earlier this month with regard to that. If there would be any further questions that the commissioners have.
I'm not sure. I think this is one.
Mayor, let me suggest that we receive this ordinance from Adrian, and that what we do is refer it to staff to have you look at it, make any comments that you have about it, and you, and city manager, decide if it's something that we need to place on an agenda, or as a work item, or however you wish to handle it.
Sure. All right. Any other public comment?
I'm Reed Nelson. I came tonight with Adrian Malat also, and I'm with the Lawrence Alliance for Responsible Lighting.
Okay.
So, we had met with Westar, our little group. You know, there's three here tonight, and there's a few more, and we've talked to a lot of people in Lawrence about this issue. And our problem, of course, is that Westar has been installing these 4,000 K lights. That's a very bright, kind of high-blue-colored light, as opposed to 3,000 K, which is what we're trying to get them to go with, which is a softer light. We pointed to the AMA article, that the American Medical Association last year published an article, and it pointed out the health hazards of the 4,000, specifically, 4,000 K streetlights. And there's, they have not retracted that article. We showed that to Westar. We had a long discussion with them. In the end, they said no. They didn't want to really hear this. So, that's why we came to you. There's no fiscal impact. We specifically told them, just from now on, just replace it with the 3,000 K, but they've refused to do that. Now, we're here tonight because your Public Works Report came out, and really, it seemed to adopt Westar's talking points, and that's why we're here. They gave our position one sentence in that report. They didn't talk about the AMA report at all. That is in the attachments, because they included some of my stuff, and my stuff has the AMA article in it, but they didn't really discuss that. Here's my concern with the report. Bottom line, when you read that report, there is no question that the 4,000 K, this high-blue-colored temperature lighting that they're putting in, is controversial. Phoenix, Arizona, went with 3,000 K. Prairie Village, Kansas, went with 3,000 K, because they're concerned about this. So, my problem with the report is that what's wrong with 3,000 K? If you read your report, it doesn't talk about any problem with the 3,000 K. It's now, as I see it, 3,000 K's an industry standard. Lots of cities are using that now. The AMA approves of it. It doesn't have any health hazards. Doesn't have this, does not have this excessive glare problem. So, it has a reduced glare. It's better visually, and there's no fiscal impact problem, just from now on, change. So, I guess we don't see why not, is our problem. I ran this AMA report, passed to a doctor friend of mine. He's a retired neurologist. He agreed with it, wholeheartedly. Said it's a concern for him, Dr. Paul Mort. He was in practice here for many years.
Wrap it up.
All right. That's all I've got for you.
Okay, thank you.
That hit my main points. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the lighting, before we go to someone that might have a different topic? Okay, thank you for coming. All right, come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ken Easthouse. I come to you not tonight as a member of the Public Incentives Committee, but as a private citizen. Recent news has come out that the head of the FCC has announced his plans to go ahead with a vote to gut the net neutrality rules. What that means for us is democracy is open to debate. I happen to think it is an absolutely horrible thing that will stifle free speech and allow telecom companies to charge us outrageous prices for basic internet access. We, as a city and community, can combat that, though. Even if the federal level decides to change the net neutrality rules, one of the proposals that I have made in the past is a utility-oriented company owned by the City of Lawrence to run high-speed fiber optic internet. I would ask that the city commission add to your work-study items the possibility of doing utility-based, high-speed internet connections. This would circumvent the FCC rules, because if we're our own telecom company, if we're our own ISP, we can set the rules for ourselves and codify them into law. This would help protect the citizens of Lawrence and democracy as we know it. And that's all I really have to say, is to ask you to research into this.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
When's the update? Because that's one of our priorities, is talking about high-speed internet and getting more of it in Lawrence. When is our next update for that?
I might defer if Brandon has any, do you have any info on our next steps on that? Brandon?
Good evening, Mayor Brandon McGuire, Assistant to the City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Brandon McGuire, Assistant to the City Manager. We don't have that scheduled for an upcoming work session, and certainly, what we're working on is not a proposal for a city-owned, or startup of a city-owned and operated internet service, but we are conducting a scan of the market, reviewing the city's policies related to right-of-way management, related to the, well, we do have a fiber policy in some of our own internal practices, and how they win their support, or maybe pose barriers to development of the private internet, privately-owned facilities. So, we could have that for you, you know, I think we're kind of scheduled out through at least the end of the year on our work sessions, maybe getting into the beginning of next year, but we could have that for you probably.
But it's not already scheduled when we're going to discuss that?
It's not scheduled at this moment, no.
Well, it's one of our priority initiatives, so I would think we would want to have it somehow on a work session in the future.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're working towards.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, put that up to the top of the list and move along.
Yeah, maybe not this year, though, because, yeah, we have like three meetings left, yes.
We're scheduled out this year, yeah. And really, January is, I think we have one meeting, one actual, one full meeting in January, so.
So probably here in the spring.
Yeah.
Okay, so in the spring, got it.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks, Brandon. Any other public comment? Okay, so we'll move on to our regular agenda. Addressing the commission, the public is allowed to speak to any regular agenda item or give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for a public comment. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments, questions to the commission. So first up, we got economic development. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission.
So Economic Development Night feels like it's shaping up to be one.
Well, hopefully so, and what we have done this year to kind of switch it up, rather than me give a dry, boring address, we actually have a video that Lindsey Slater, of the chamber, our communications person, has put together, which I think depicts some of the activity, maybe in a little bit more interesting and enjoyable way than it would be if you were listening to me drone on. So with that, if everything works well here, we'll.
We've almost wrapped up our first year in our Growing Forward program, and you might be asking yourself, just what has the EDC done with that funding? Just to recap, over 110 companies invested $1.7 million over five years. We have this awesome strategic plan to grow forward and lead Lawrence and Douglas County. The money raised is to help us complete all the stuff we said we're going to do over the next five years, from 2017 to 2021. We focus on five areas: business retention and expansion, workforce development, business recruitment and marketing, entrepreneurship and startups, and finally, site and infrastructure capacity. Now that you're back to the speed, here's where we start telling you about all the great stuff we're doing. Let's start with business retention and expansion. Just last month, we issued our very first Metropolitan E-Community Loan from Network Kansas. That gap loan of $45,000 ensures that a local business owner can buy a building, hire new staff, and expand services. We've also put a lot of work in with East Oak Business Park, like working toward the businesses taking over governance of the park, and trying to help companies provide good options for their employees. EDC staff has met with about 300 local businesses and organizations over the course of 2017. We've also acquired some software for community data and business information that already includes 53 projects, 148 business listings, and 579 business contacts, and it continues to grow. And while we can't measure connections, we're listening to issues and bringing people together to find answers to problems. Maybe it's a creative storage solution, or helping in securing a visa, but it's all about connections. We're becoming the key resource for business assistance in Lawrence and Douglas County. A hot topic across the country is workforce development, our next core initiative, and we've got two words for you, Peaslee Tech. The EDC has provided $2 million in funding to the school since its inception, and since opening its doors in 2015, Peaslee Tech has grown from 150 to nearly 400 students. Staff is busy applying for grants, and just recently, the training center has added four more programs. Plus, we can't forget the two privately-funded labs that have opened, the Belcher Family HVAC Labs and the Lawrence New Car Auto Dealers Auto Lab, and we're constantly working on how to continue funding Peaslee Tech. And a consortium of local financial institutions are stepping up to help take over a loan to help with Peaslee Tech's mortgage. Not every community has a Peaslee Tech, and that sets Lawrence apart. Workforce is the number-one decision-making factor in site selection circles, and will be for the foreseeable future. Because we have Peaslee Tech and its ability to do custom training, the investment we've made will pay off in the years to come. Next, we have a fan-favored initiative, business recruitment and marketing. The EDC successfully recruited two new companies to Lawrence this year, Polymeric Labels from the UK and Sterna from China. Both are expanding from their native countries and pick Lawrence as the place to be. We've received five new potential projects in October alone, with an additional 11 projects that we're in the running for. The largest project requires 500,000 square feet, and the potential for job creation ranges from 50 to over 500, depending on the company. Plus, we have new software that will provide up-to-date business info, which allows us to better tailor responses when a business comes calling with a request for information about Lawrence. While that's exciting, a lot of groundwork is being laid behind the scenes to continue improving our recruitment and marketing efforts. We now can create demographic and industry profiles in-house. We're targeting specific industries that have been traveling around the country to meet with site selectors and business prospects. We're also in the process of overhauling the EDC website and marketing materials. And let's not forget about our friends on the Hill. We've been involved in a variety of projects with the Bioscience and Technology Business Center, and a lot of work has been done to enhance our relationship with the University of Kansas as a whole. We're touring schools, talking about how to support entrepreneurs, developing an intern program, and we recently surveyed KU alumni to get their thoughts on Lawrence as a place to live and do business. Thanks to that survey, we have 150 warm leads from Jayhawks who have influence in their company's location decisions. When it comes to entrepreneurship and startups, we've been working with Network Kansas as an e-community. We've scheduled an upcoming youth entrepreneurship challenge with the Douglas County E-Community, slated for the spring. We formalized our partnership with One Million Cups Lawrence, and recently added new officer positions on the board, focused on workforce and innovation and entrepreneurship. And finally, let's grow our site and infrastructure capacity, shall we? Earlier this year, the city approved the Catalyst Program, which makes it easier and faster for businesses to get incentives for qualified development projects. Van Trust Real Estate is in the process of developing three tracks at Lawrence Venture Park, with spec buildings totaling 550,000 square feet. And once we fill Lawrence Venture Park, we'll have to go somewhere, and the process of finding future development sites is underway. And as we look to the future, we want to be the key resource for local businesses, link the business community with Peaslee Tech, market to our strengths to recruit the right companies, bring our partners together to row the entrepreneurial boat in the same direction, and find future sites to meet the logistical, size, and infrastructure needs of companies looking at Lawrence. So needless to say, we've been busy. While we're only one year into our five-year plan, we've been laying the groundwork for many of the strategies that will help us achieve our ultimate goals, growing jobs and expanding our economic base. Thanks for helping us continue to grow forward.
You might stop it before it keeps playing. Uh-oh.
It's Weekend Update with Colin Jost and Michael Chang.
With that, and again, thanks to Lindsey for putting the information into a format that's a little bit more enjoyable than kind of a dry conversation. We do certainly have, if you have an interest in any questions, Adam Hanchee and I are available, and we have Larry there to coach us if we get in trouble, to respond to any questions that you have. And again, as always, anytime you have an area of interest or a question about anything, just let us know, but certainly would stand for a couple of questions as time allows.
Well, Peaslee Tech just gained a new designation, perhaps you could talk about that?
Yes, they recently, and they've been working on this, but they recently got word that they had been, they are now the latest accredited institution by the Board of Regents. The designation in and of itself is probably a positive, because it's something that you have as kind of certifying that you have certain capabilities. But the other exciting thing is it gives access potentially to some programmatic funding for various things that heretofore Peaslee couldn't qualify for because they weren't accredited. So it opens some doors to some programs, both for individuals who are going through the classes, and also in terms of maybe a little more support for the, for Peaslee Tech itself. So that is a very positive thing.
What's the timeline on Van Trust?
In the conversations that we've had, and I talked to them recently, I think their plan is to begin construction on the first building in the spring, when the construction season opens up, and that would, the first building is the one that's scheduled to be around 150,000 square feet. But I just talked to them a couple of weeks ago, and I think city staff has continued to be in touch, and that's the latest information that we have, is that they're a go in the spring.
Any questions?
The two companies that came into town this year, that you've talked about up there, how many jobs did that come with it?
They're both fairly small, at least initially, but I think the plans for both are to be at the 40, you know, 35 to 40, maybe 45 jobs within a year or so. Polymeric, which is the English company, the British company, they're currently working, getting their building ready for full production, they're doing some things on a limited basis now, but I think after first of the year, they plan to be at kind of full production, gearing up, but they expected maybe 30 jobs within the first year, then going on from there. And then with Sterna, which is the Chinese company, I think their expectation was to be at around 40 jobs or so within a year or so. So in that 35, 40 range is kind of what we're expecting.
Each company?
Each company, yes.
Great.
Steve, now, what are we doing on finishing the deal? Are there things that we don't have?
You have the ability to finish deals, companies aren't selecting Lawrence for whatever reason? Is it because our policies?
Well, and I will relate, and those of, several of those here have already heard, had seen this presentation, we had a little conversation about this at our investors, Chamber Investors Meeting last week. We recently finished a close in the top three or four on a project, it was codename laminate, but it was a Japanese company that was looking for a location to do a production facility. What we had learned is that they were, they were a very valid company, they've got operations in Japan, another plant in Vietnam, and they were, this was going to be their first US plant. They do have a sales office, I believe, now, but they were looking to establish a facility, 175 jobs roughly, and around $40 million investment over a five-year period. And we were in the finals out of 150 locations that they started with, we were in the final four, and we just learned about 10 days ago, I guess it was, 10, not this past week, but the week before, that we had not, we were not the final selection. And I did do some follow-up with the Kansas Partner Commerce rep who was working on the project, to find out from their site team, what were the things that they saw as positive, and what were some of the negatives. And the two things that came up, and one, there were a lot of positives, they really liked the community, obviously, if you were selected from 150 folks in the starting cast down to the last three or four, they obviously liked the community, liked a lot of things about Lawrence. In the end, the two things that they brought up as things that were not negatives necessarily, but maybe weighed a little bit on their decision, is that one of the other sites, and we don't know where ultimately they've located, we just know that it's not in Kansas, one of the other sites had a supplier that was a good fit for what they needed, so they had a source of some of their input already located in that community, which was a positive for them. And the other thing they cited was infrastructure costs were higher here than they would like them to be. And that's what we know at this point, in terms of the negatives or the commentary that we received. And we're trying to get some more feedback, but that's what we've been told at this point, is that they had a supplier in one of the other communities, and a concern about the infrastructure cost here.
So in a situation like that, would we have had an opportunity to have heard further communication from them, and if decision needed to be rendered by this board to make that happen, or is it's all in, they take the information and compare it to everybody else?
At a certain point, and it's hard to say exactly when that point is, you know, that when they're down to the final decision, then, you know, the door kind of closes. We did go back with them, back to them with some response in terms of some things that we thought we could do to help offset some of this concern about infrastructure. There was a considerable, you know, you'd never really know where the gap, what the totality of the gap is, but we did provide some offsets on the training side in particular, because they had expressed a lot of interest in training during the conversations and during the process, and so we made sure to do whatever we could on the training side, and also made some, gave the potential for some adjustments in terms of kind of the timing of some of the abatement to offset, or at least to front-load the abatement a little bit, that, which we thought might be helpful also, but in the end, they made another choice.
I would also say that I think having a program that we can point to and say that this is something that, you know, provided that you meet the parameters of the program, it's fairly routine, and it's a quick approval process that was helpful to us. The infrastructure costs that Steve mentioned, I think primarily have to do with the special assessments related to the Venture Park property, and the amount of some of those hanging out there, and while they're spread over a 20-year period, you know, that can be a concern. But I think in this particular instance, it sounded like the pull of the supplier elsewhere was a major factor.
I will say, you know, on behalf of the community and on behalf of the city staff, I think in the conversations that we had, and at the time when they actually made their visit, they were very pleased with the response, responsiveness of the community, of the city. I think they were amazed at as, and we were very fortunate, and city staff did a great job, we had all the right people at the table, so when they talked about infrastructure issues, when they talked about permitting, we had the right people there, and I think time and time again, the response that they gave following the communication from the folks on our side was very positive, that they were very pleased at the flexibility that was expressed, at the willingness to work with them on a timely basis to move things forward, because as is in most of the cases of this type, you're, they're working through a process, and they have spent considerable amount of time to get, when they're down from the 150 to the four, it takes a while, and it's always the case that when you get to the end, when they're ready to go, they're ready to go. And so, the process of permitting, the speed at which you can move, the responsiveness, those are all really important, and I think they were very impressed with the willingness of city staff, whether it was on the permitting side, whether it was on the infrastructure side, utility side, I think that was a great positive also. That was, all the response we got there was very, very positive. But, you know, unfortunately, we didn't win this one.
Any other questions?
I got a question. Could you talk a little bit about the business retention and growth of existing businesses in town, a little bit?
Okay. Well, one of the things that Adam and I are trying to do, and really, all the chamber staff is involved in some way, but it's really Adam and I's primary responsibility, we are making a point to continuously reach out to the companies in the community for a variety of reasons. One, it's something that we need to be doing anyway, I think it's always important to be interacting and connecting with your businesses, but particularly in regards to some of our businesses who may have opportunities to expand, or maybe actually looking at doing an expansion, or making some sort of change, or adding a process, or adding a production line, there are resources available, maybe not necessarily from the city in all cases, but in some cases from the city, certainly from the state and from other places, other organizations, that might be able to be used in helping that company maybe offset a little bit of the cost, maybe speed the process for them, maybe offset some of the risk. And unless we're working directly, and really, it goes beyond that, I think, as I've talked to groups, I think it's very important that the community be involved also, and if you know of someone in a small business situation, a manufacturer or whatever, if there are opportunities that they're looking at to potentially grow the business, it's really important, I think, for that to be communicated to the chamber, or to Adam and I, and we may not in all cases be able to help them, but if we know, we at least have the opportunity to look to see if there are some things that could be done, or some connections that could be made to be helpful. So I think that's kind of, you know, at the first level, is something very important, is the communication and the knowledge of what's going on, and we have, and it wasn't articulated in this, we have a number of situations we're working on now, where maybe a connection that we've made has helped a local business maybe get through a problem or find an alternative, that it may not look like a big expenditure of dollars, and perhaps it isn't, but if it's, if you can be a resource and help offset some sort of a liability, or help speed a process for a local business, that's really important to them, and it not only helps them be more successful in their business, it also cements the relationship with the community, and people who feel like the community cares, the chamber cares, the ED... who feel like the community cares, the chamber cares, the ED office cares, that is something that pays off over the long run. When those companies are looking at other opportunities down the road, we become more of a go-to and they're thinking of Lawrence first, which is always what you want a local business to be thinking. You want that expansion, if at all possible, to happen here. So a lot of it's about communication. We're also trying to develop relationship with businesses and get them to think of Peaslee as that training resource that they need. You know, Peaslee is, as was mentioned in the video, is a tremendous resource. It's a great advantage that we have. But it's only an advantage to the point that our businesses are using Peaslee and they're thinking of Peaslee as the first option for a lot of their training needs. So there's a variety of things, but it all, I think hinges on communication and building that base of knowledge and then working on an ongoing basis and making companies aware of the fact, we're there to help. It may not be resources that we have, it may not be resources from the city, but we'll do our darndest to find opportunities or possibilities for them to help them be more successful.
So have you worked with some specific companies in town where you've been successful at helping them to grow or to expand or?
Well, there are some things that we have done and I'm a little reticent to use names, but there are several companies that we have been working with, are working with now on expansions. Some of them more, you know, of greater size than others. We've also tried to, to the way that we can, tried to help a couple of companies in town that are misfits in terms of their building size, trying to match up those two companies because it looks to us like there might be an opportunity for them to partner in some way, or maybe even in the end swap buildings, because one building is, in a building is probably oversized for what they need and probably will need in the future. We've got another company that has had a lot of growth and is probably outgrowing their building. And so we're trying to, broker's probably not the right word, but facilitate those kinds of connections to help these companies get to maximize their success. And again, sometimes it's not about money and it may not be about direct jobs now, but it's about putting people in a better position to be successful over the long term.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Let's go to public comment then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Unless you had anyone else that was wanting to speak? Okay. So is there any public comment on this item? Come on up to the microphone and sign in and? Thank you. Okay. Well, I'll close public comment then. Back to us. So our action here is to receive the presentation. Presentation received. Any other final comment before we move on?
Good information. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming tonight and for showing us the video. We appreciate it. Excellent.
And again, if you have any questions, you know, we're out.
Okay, we will. All right. So let's move on to number two. Receive recommendations from the Public and Centers Review Committee and consider adopting Resolution Number 7230, authorizing the issuance of up to five million in industrial revenue bonds for the Boys and Girls Club Center for Great Futures Project to obtain a sales tax exemption on project construction materials.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Britt Cromcano with the city. Tonight, you're just considering an IRB request for a sales tax exemption on an expansion project that the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence will be doing. They are adding about 17,000 square feet onto the College and Career Center for a teen center. And again, this is only for sales tax exemption. The total project costs are estimated at about 4.5 million and about 2 million of that is estimated as the sales tax, the materials that would be subject to sales tax. In estimating the breakout of that, the city would forego about $42,000 in sales tax revenues, the county about 7,000, the state 130,000. The total is about 181,000. Per committee reviewed this request and made recommendation at their November 14th meeting. They voted five to zero to recommend approval of this IRB. And at this point, Colby Wilson, who's the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club is here, and I'd like him to tell you a little bit more about the project and why he's requesting this, and then we can open it up for questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Commissioners, before I start, just want to say thank you for your ongoing support, both from the commission and city staff of the Boys and Girls Club, both the teen center project and all the great programs we have here in Lawrence. I've been here several times over the last three years talking about this project. I'm happy to say that it is underway and that we are most of the way there on the funding that we need to make this facility happen. So we're really excited about that. As you know, we only have a really small outdated teen center that can serve about 50 kids a day. As a result, there are thousands of middle schoolers and high schoolers that are on their own after school and during the summertime. I'm going to skip real quickly to the return on investment that we think the sales tax exemption will bring in the form of economic development outcomes. First, increased earning power. We anticipate 200 to 250 families every day, probably 1,000 or so families a year, who, working parents and families, be able to work after school and during summer, knowing that their kids are involved in a safe, positive program. In addition to that, the Center for Great Futures, which is what we're calling our new teen center, will be attached to the Lawrence College and Career Center and on the same campus as the Peaslee Tech Center that you heard about previously. These partnerships and programs will result in more young people graduating high school, career-ready, and ultimately earning more money and paying more taxes here in our city. In addition to that, the flip side of more productive, caring, responsible citizens is less societal costs for healthcare, public assistance, incarceration, those types of things. And then I just, we added one modest piece around more jobs. We anticipate when we open that there'll be three full-time, well, we know that when we open the new facility next fall, there's going to be three additional full-time positions that we will hire and for sure four part-time positions and maybe more after that. So you may be wondering why we are here. As I was curious myself when I learned about this about six months ago, we're not eligible for a project exemption certificate at the state level. Our designation does not allow for that, unlike churches, schools, other nonprofits that have that designation. Moving forward, I'm going to figure out how to get that changed, but I just, the changing that law, I didn't have time to do that. So this was our Plan B, is to go through this process and be exempt on the materials for the construction.
Excellent. Any questions for Colby?
So, Colby, and this is a question I was going to ask staff, but do you guys pay sales tax on anything that you purchase, any services or goods?
We do not.
But in this one here, you have to?
Yes. We're not eligible on new, we're not exempt on new construction materials.
State deal, right?
State deal.
What's that?
Yeah, we'll take care of that one.
Any other questions for Colby? Well, thank you for all that you're doing for our community.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Any questions, I guess, for Britt? Did you have any more you wanted to say before we went to public comment? Okay. Well, let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Come on up to the microphone and sign in. All right. All right, back to the commission.
We can fix that.
I think so.
All right, so?
We're taking care of a lot of state law tonight, right? There we go.
All right. So someone want to make the motion then?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All right. Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. Let me get back to it. I would entertain a motion to receive the recommendation from the Per Committee and adopt Resolution Number 7230, authorizing the issuance of up to $5 million in industrial revenue bonds for the Boys and Girls Club for Great Futures Project and to obtain a sales tax exemption on project construction materials.
And you seconded?
Seconded.
All right. So a motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Larson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Well, good luck. I'm looking forward to getting a tour and seeing the new digs.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we're on to number three. Conduct a public hearing regarding blighted conditions of the property located at 1215 East 19th Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Brian Jimenez with Code Enforcement Division of Planning and Development Services. Before you tonight is one of our typical abatement resolutions for exterior yard conditions at 1215 East 19th. I'll be very brief in my presentation. You have a memo from us outlining some of the history. Typically, when we get here, we've worked really hard with the property owner. I think it's fair to say there's some hoarding tendencies at this property. Since the pictures were taken and since we posted this for the agenda, we have worked with some local agencies. We found some students that were looking for some community service work and they've actually already taken a dumpster of stuff off that property. We visited yesterday afternoon. There's still quite a bit to go in the backyard. We've had a lot of complaints from neighbors. The house right next door to the west is for sale. As you can imagine, it creates an eyesore to the surrounding neighbors. It's my hope with adoption of the resolution tonight, you give them, give this property owner until December the 13th. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we can facilitate a further cleanup and we won't have to get involved. If that doesn't take place with the adoption of the resolution, we would then take action like we have before and we would actually go clean up the remaining yard conditions and bring it into compliance with this property maintenance code. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Well, that's good news to hear that a group is willing to step up and help out.
We always try to do that when we got lucky. This time, there was a group looking for some pretty quick.
Excellent. Any public comment on this item? Oh, sorry. This needs to be a formal opening, eh? Let me scroll over here.
Second.
All right. So motion made by Vice Mayor Bowley, seconded by Commissioner Amick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously, so the hearing is open. Thank you, Sherry. Is there any public comment on this item?
Move to close public comment.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Vice Mayor Bowley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously to close the public hearing. Is there any commission comment on this?
Thanks, Brian. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7229.
Second.
Don't we need to read the whole thing?
Which requires the owner of the property to abate the cited property maintenance code violations within 20 days of the adoption and further direct city staff to abate the violations if the occupant fails to abate as ordered.
Thank you, Commissioner Amick.
Still wish to second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we're on to number four. To conduct a public hearing, consider recommendations from the Historic Resources Commission for the following five properties. Hello, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Lynn Braddock-Sollner, Historic Resources Administrator for the city. I'm always excited to bring you and the community a piece of Lawrence history, and tonight's no exception. We'll start with the property that's associated with an early stud farm and conclude with a house that's associated with the beginnings of the Douglas County Fairgrounds. The properties represent the growth and development of Lawrence from 1870 to 1955. Yes, tonight, we'll see a representation of mid-century modern residential structure. Currently, there are only two of these types of properties listed in the Lawrence Register. The Lawrence Register is meant to be an all-inclusive register of properties that not only represent the architecture of Lawrence, but also people and places associated with properties that make this community so special. A register that recognizes all types of properties is a register that begins to tell the story of what defines the sense of place that is Lawrence, Kansas. This map shows the location of the five nominated properties. At the top left of the corner of the map, you'll see the Robert E. House residence located at 645 Mississippi Street. In the middle of the screen is the Henry Buell Ober House, which is located at 1509 Massachusetts Street. The left center is the Benjamin Acres House at 1645 Louisiana Street. At the bottom of the screen, way down here, you'll see the Lee Zimmerman House located at 200 Nebraska Street. And then over on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see the Means House, which the large square is the Douglas County Fairgrounds. The Benjamin F. Acres House is located at 1645 Louisiana Street and was constructed between 1872 and 1874. The Italianate House is associated with the Kansas Stud Farm that in the 1870s had approximately 300 horses with stables and a training horse. And you can see in the map, the actual training circle here, and then the house was located in this portion of the property. Like many rural farmsteads adjacent to the growing city of Lawrence, the farm was eventually divided into smaller lots and in 1887 was platted as the University Place subdivision to accommodate a more suburban development pattern. While the land associated with the Acres House was platted for this type of development, the Acres House has been, has maintained its place and has actually been saved and includes three lots, a little bit over three lots. The Italianate architecture you'll see in the wonderful house has the large overhanging eaves with the brackets, this wonderful wraparound porch. It's a little bit more difficult to see, but you can see the wonderful lintels over the windows and some of these are all the way to the ground of the porch. The Historic Resources Commission is recommending this property for nomination to the Lawrence Register, both for its association with the growth and development of Lawrence as well as its architecture. The Robert E. House residence located at 645 Mississippi Street was constructed in 1918. This prairie-style house was designed by architect Henry McAlice for Robert E. House, who sold men's clothing and accessories at 729 Massachusetts Street. Robert was the son of Jacob House, who was an established men's clothier in Lawrence, and the two later-owned Jay House and Sons Clothing Store, which was a downtown business on Massachusetts Street. Many of you may remember the Jacob House for his lovely residence at 805 Ohio Street, which is a grand cleaning and style house on that corner that some people refer to as the Old Simmons Hospital. It's listed in Lawrence Register, by the way. Details that distinguish this prairie-style house include, again, the large overhanging eaves, this wonderful porch with a very prominent cornice line and some decorative eaves, and then this wonderful wood hood that's over the primary entrance to the structure. The HRC has recommended the Robert E. House residence for listing in the Lawrence Register for its architecture. Here's the modern property I promised you. This is the Lee Zimmerman House located at 200 Nebraska Street, which was constructed in 1955. It was designed by Warren Haleman. The Zimmerman House is very distinctive. It has, the facade has these five L-shaped brackets, there's a little close-up right here. And the interesting thing about the brackets is they project right from underneath the eve and they go all the way down to the ground. And on the rears of the structure, brackets actually poke out the rear, and so it gives the visual impression that those brackets go all the way through the house. While nominated for its architecture, its unique mid-century modern architecture, the house is also associated with Lee Zimmerman of the Zimmerman Steel Company. This is the Henry Buell Ober House located at 1509 Massachusetts Street. This is a Mission Revival-style residence and it was constructed from 1913 to 1914. This one is very uncommon, the style of architecture in Lawrence. As a matter of fact, when the architectural history of Lawrence- As a matter of fact, when the architectural history of Lawrence was done for the National Register of Historic Places thematic nomination for the city, this type of architecture was not even considered to have enough representation in Lawrence to be included in that National Register history of the city. So this is a very special property for Lawrence, and as you can see from the historic photograph, has not significantly changed during the historic time period. Significant architectural features for the structure include the roof form with the red clay tiles, and then this wonderful portico entrance that has the nice stone that ends in this wonderful arch, and then has this lovely pediment up here. It is being nominated for its architecture, and interesting, I love, some of you may know that Ober was also a clothier in downtown Lawrence. The final property for your consideration this evening is not a property significant for architecture, but a property that's recommended to you by the HRC as significant for its association with the growth and development of Lawrence and with Judge Hugh Means. This unassuming sandstone structure located on the Douglas County Fairgrounds was constructed circa 1870 and was the birthplace of Hugh Means. There's some information in your packet and in the HRC information packet about Judge Means. Means graduated in 1895 from the University of Kansas Law School, and he served 32 years as District Court Judge for the Fourth Judicial District that consisted of Douglas, Franklin, and Anderson Counties. A memorial resolution to the District Court and Douglas County Bar Association, when Means died, quoted that he took keen interest in the operations of the farm, and later states finally, however, he was happy to make it available at far less than its value for the youth of the county as part of the 4-H Club Fairgrounds Project. Because Means sold the property to the 4-H Club, the property's been utilized as part of the county fairgrounds and is not developed with a typical suburban development pattern that was common for semi-royal farmsteads adjacent to Lawrence. The architectural integrity of the structure has been compromised, but the structure maintains sufficient integrity of location and design that make it worthy of preservation as the last connection to the original Means Farmstead. Douglas County submitted the nomination and hopes to continue to work with the structure on interpretation of historic rural farmsteads and the Means family history. The Historic Resources Commission has adopted resolutions that were in your packet to recommend these five properties to the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. Each property has been reviewed by the HRC and been found to meet the criteria established in Chapter 22. Chapter 22 requires the city commission consider the nomination of landmarks at a public hearing. The reports required by Chapter 22 are in your packets, and with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Did you say the one at 1509 Mass? I was trying to find it here. Is the, is the only one of its kind in Lawrence?
It's not the only one. It's one of the few representations of that architectural style we have. We just, when they were doing that history of architecture within the city, there weren't enough of that style in the city for them to even classify it as one of the styles for the city.
Oh, I see.
We just don't have very many in the city of that style.
Interesting. Any questions for staff?
There were a couple of letters in the mail, looking directly to 200 Nebraska. Have you had a chance to review the letter from Mr. Simons and from Mr. Kogel?
Both of those were when the property went to the Historic Resources Commission.
Okay.
The property went twice to the Historic Resources Commission. Mr. Simons' mail letter was the first time I had the opportunity to visit with him at length with his son, and they, the Historic Resources Commission adopts an environs definition. Their portion and their property in that definition was such, they felt comfortable not opposing the nomination. And then the other letter was also at the Historic Resources Commission, and I have not heard back from that property owner.
Can you comment on the maintenance of that property? I mean, the gentleman says the Zimmerman's created a wonderful house, it's certainly notable, but the last few owners have neglected the home and the property. Can you address that?
I can tell you that we typically, the property maintenance code would get into maintenance if the structure were beyond being maintained. There is a section in Chapter 22, if the property is listed, that it has to be maintained. So those two things will go in conjunction. When house, when staff was out taking photographs, it seems to be normal maintenance that the house needs to have a little TLC right now.
So it, it needs to have a little, I mean, how does, how does the timing of this work? Is this generally adopted, and then that attention is provided to the property, or is the attention provided before the?
That's up to the property owner. It's not anything that requires attention to the property under the property maintenance code at this time.
Any other questions for Lynn?
I have a question. So when a property's listed as a landmark, how does that impact the environs, the houses that are around it, and how far out does that impact it?
There's a 250-foot area around the property when it's listed in the Lawrence Register of Historic Places. Anything that requires a demolition permit or a building permit for the exterior alterations to a building gets reviewed for its impact on the listed property or the environs of that listed property. And so most of those are at a staff level, and I actually have a couple of things, just a few items. We have a review software that started in June of 2012. And just to give you kind of an idea, the majority of those are administrative reviews. When they come through, we review those the same time as the building permit. Our target goal is to get those reviews done within five business days, and so we review those with the building permit applications. So you can see, we looked at 333 projects during that time. 244 of those were administrative, 87 reviewed by the HRC, and then of those four were denied. One of the four that was denied was the Marriott that went to the Historic, to the City Commission and was overturned and approved. One was denied by the HRC. They went back and worked with staff and went through as an administrative review. And then two, one was withdrawn at the City Commission hearing. That was a Black Hills demolition request. And then the other, the applicant decided not to move forward with the project. Thank you.
Lynn, going back again, you said that the environs review on the administrative level takes about five days.
It does not take about five days.
Tell, tell me.
No, most of the time.
Tell us about that.
Okay. Okay, so when a permit comes in, we have this wonderful new system, and if it's within one of those blue circles, the system automatically flags it, and we, the planning department gets a review for it that same day. And it'll show up in my workflow, and so we check our workflow every day. So we go in and we check that, and it says it's a review for plumbing. So I automatically click on it. It doesn't have to have a review, anything like that. If it's a demolition permit, we check and see, okay, does that have to have review? If it does have to have review, demolition permits have a 30-day review, and so we do the review during that time period. If it's something like a new addition that would require HRC review, depending on the size of the addition, that can be done the same time. The five days is when the building permit comes in, we have five days to get them back review comments. We usually, Scott can speak to how quickly we turn those around, but we only have five days usually to get them comments back. Most of the time, we're turning those permits quickly, see if it was a deck or a new front porch. Those are usually turned around in a couple of days. So it's the same timeframe as the building permit. And you can probably...
I would just say, Commissioners, we have departmental goals to turn around permit reviews within five days on residential permits, and we often exceed that. Every month, you'll see our building permit report. We track that data through some of those means, and so at the same time, a plans examiner is looking at the building plans for building code issues. Historic Resource Division is looking at it from this historic standpoint.
Any other questions?
And back to 200 Nebraska again, on the property maintenance code, if you're going by. So we don't have anything right now that would cause us concern, the governing body, concern about this property being in any type of violation, correct?
I did not see anything when I was out there taking photographs for this meeting.
Okay. The only reason that I wonder, I mean, it just, it probably wouldn't look quite right. You know, the city commission approving, you know, the designation one day, and, you know, some type of property maintenance issue the next, so just checking. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so we need to formally open the public hearing. I'll move to do that.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Sodin, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously to open the public hearing. So come on up, sign in, as Dennis is illustrating, and tell us your opinion.
It was so easy. Good evening, Commissioners. Dennis Brown, President of Lawrence Preservation Alliance. And the first four of these five properties tonight is a part of our Lawrence Register project, LPA project, where we've used membership dollars. We have about 200 annual dues-paying members in our organization to fund professional documentation of significant properties that are not currently listed on any historic register in Lawrence. And we have four properties here tonight. The last four of the 10 that we've been working with on the project have just passed at the Historic Resources Commission level. Of the four tonight, in our estimation, three of them would, could easily qualify for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. But again, none of them are listed on either the local, the state, or the national at this time. 1645 Louisiana, 1872, is a very historic, well-preserved structure whose property literally became the University Place neighborhood. 645 Mississippi is an excellent example of the prairie style, which is pretty rare in Lawrence. It was built for Jacob House's son, Robert. Corlett Cotton lived there for a number of years, and he sold it to your own David Wagner. David lived there for a while. 200 Nebraska is a Lawrence Modern. We're really excited to get some Lawrence Modern properties on the Register of Historic Places. Properties have to be 50 years old to be considered for the register, but having a modern along with something that was built in the 1800s kind of illustrates the point that the register is an ongoing thing. It's not stuck in the past. Hopefully, there are a number of properties built, being built today that future generations will decide deserve to be listed on the Lawrence Register or any historic register. That was built for Lee and Kathy Zimmerman, of the family that owned the Zimmerman &amp; Sons Hardware, which is now Cotton's Hardware, and the Zimmerman Steel. 1509 Massachusetts, 1913, is an excellent example of a very rare architectural form in Lawrence, which is the Mission Revival, built for Henry Bert Ober, who had a major clothing store downtown. The fifth landmark nomination tonight on Harper Street isn't part of our project, but the LPA is certainly strongly supportive of it, and we commend the Douglas County Commissioners and staff for bringing that nomination forward. I'd like to make a brief point that property owners that list their properties on the register...
Gotta wrap it up, Dennis.
Okay. Don't get any benefit at all from listing on the register. They're trying to preserve their properties into the future and provide some stability for their neighborhood. Philip Wedge, the owner of 1645 Louisiana, is here tonight with a special historic photo that you ought to see.
Okay, excellent. We can put it on the Elmo. Will you help him put that up on the Elmo?
I gotta sneak peek.
I'm Philip Wedge, owner of, well, co-owner with my wife of 1645 Louisiana. It's a house that's been in our family for over 40 years. My parents owned it before I did. This photograph is from soon after the house was built. There's actually still scaffolding on the exterior, and you can see in the background the large racetrack and also some of the fencing for the horse farm, the Kansas Stud Farm, as some called it. I think it's wonderful that this is an opportunity to have, have Lawrence properties given some protection by, by the city. Certainly, our, our goal is to eventually have the, the house nominated for state and historical, state and national recognition, but this is a nice starting point, and I hope you'll approve it.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing the picture, too.
Sure.
I have handed out. Hope this doesn't dig into my three minutes.
I think we can wait to start your three minutes till you're standing at the podium.
Hi, my name's Katie Walsh, and I live at 732 Rhode Island. And what I handed out is this wonderful new brochure that the LPA has, the Lawrence Preservation Alliance has come up with, and it answers a lot of those questions that we all have about if you own a historic home, the misperceptions about your neighbors won't be able to do anything if your home is on the historic register. This is also online at the Lawrence Preservation Alliance website, so we want to get those into everybody's hands. Dennis already said, and I agree with what he said, and the questions that you asked were excellent, and about the maintenance at 200 Nebraska. I wanted to mention that should that mid-century modern home get on the local register, and should they want to get on the state register, then they are eligible for 35% off taxes on, or, I'm gonna say this wrong, a 35% reduction on the cost of redoing the exterior if they adhere to the Secretary of Interior standards. So, you know, should the owner want to fix up the outside, this is the first step in getting some help on that. I also, having a mid-century modern house on the register is pretty exciting. I'm sure you all know Tom Harper, the Realtor, who started Lawrence Modern, which has been an organization for, I don't know how, maybe 10 years now. They have over 200 members. They meet every month in a mid-century modern house somewhere in Lawrence. Great website. So I would like to see a lot more mid-century modern on the register, and I hope you vote to put all of these on the register. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any other public comment?
Glad to sign in. Hi. Hi. My name is Heidi Gluck. I am the most recent owner at 200 Nebraska Street. I just wanted to say that I'm really thankful to Katie and to Tom and to Dennis for all of the research that they've done on the home. It's a fascinating story and history. It's a beautiful home to live in and to take care of, and I just want to report that we've started the maintenance on the outside of the house. Some of the problem was to do with wood rot on those protruding beams, which is one of the defining characteristics of the house. So that's been done. The wood rot is fixed, and there's, you know, still some steps to take. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Yes.
Any other public comment?
Hello, I'm Katie Claggett.
Can we get the website on here real quick?
Sure, Casey can help. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Casey.
Alright. My name is Tom Harper, founder of Lawrence Modern, and this is Katie Claggett. She actually wrote the application for the nomination, along with, I'm sure, some help with the LPA, she's actually a member of the LPA. So, first of all, I want to say thank you to Katie for doing this, because it's a lot of work to prepare the application, and I hope all of you get a chance to read it. There's been some discussion about, oh, I don't like it, or, you know, why is it on there, and, you know, it looks like a box, and, you know, all this stuff. I think if you take the time to read the application, it explains why it's a special home. And there's been a lot of talk about the exterior, which I like, but I thought it'd be interesting for you to see the interior. This is one of the sexiest stairs in all of Lawrence, Kansas. It can't be topped, I'm sure. So, the architect just really created a sacred, special place, as you can see, with the fireplace in the center of the home, that's the hearth, and the interior opens up to the backyard. There's, I think, 20 foot, 18 foot panels of glass right there that opens up to the backyard. It's just a really beautiful place, it kind of almost feels like a place of worship, I think, your heart just kind of opens. So, I'm obviously asking you to support the nomination, I think the photos speak for themselves, and this is gonna be the third mid-century modern property on the register in Lawrence. The first one was the double hyperbolic parabloid at 21st and Alabama, the Ecumenical Christian, or Campus Ministries, the second, and then this will be the third, and I think that our depot, that you just took ownership of, will be the fourth. So, we have lots of exciting things happening on the mid-century front, and I just think it's worthy of being on the register, and I look forward to having more on the register. And I found it interesting that Dolph Simons wrote the letter, his father actually opposed the construction of this house in the, in 59 or 56 when it was built, and here we are again, and I just find that history interesting, how it repeats itself sometimes. So, Dolph, if you're listening, grab, you know, get on board, and you can, you can join our club, awesome.
Yeah, it's funny you use the word worship, because they look, those beams look like flying buttresses, almost. They're very interesting.
Just beautiful. So, I'd be glad to meet with Mr. Simons for coffee sometime.
I assume you already did a tour of that house with Lawrence Modern?
Yeah.
Excellent, I missed it. Thank you, I don't have anything else to add. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the pictures, too.
Hi. My name, my name's Tim Hostler, I teach design at KU. I'm also a part of Lawrence Modern with Tom, and I'd like to read a statement by our other partner in Lawrence Modern, Dennis Domer. Dennis is a retired architecture professor at KU. So, he writes, "The Zimmerman House is a thoroughly modern house of a kind not otherwise found in Lawrence. Strongly influenced by Japanese architecture, and to a lesser extent by European modernism, the Zimmerman House in 1955 presented a strikingly different house than most people in Lawrence had ever experienced. It was so different that it bewildered, even offended, which paralleled an emotional reaction many people had to modern, non-representational paintings of Picasso, Miro, or Rothko. Like these paintings that didn't look like art to many people, the Zimmerman House didn't look like a house to many people. It was shocking, a response to modernism scholars later described as the shock of the new. As an architecture and engineering student at KU in the 1940s, Warren Hyman was steeped in modern architecture. He personally experienced Japanese architecture during his service in the US Navy after World War II, and in the Korean War. He also knew how much Japanese architecture had influenced Frank Lloyd Wright, who had visited the KU campus while Hyman was a student. Shortly after, shortly after Hyman began his practice in Spokane, Washington in the 1950s, he married into the Zimmerman family of Lawrence. Lee Zimmerman was a very successful businessman who founded the Zimmerman Steel Company, and in that business, he was persuaded by the value and economy of industrialized building principles. Mr. and Mrs. Zimmerman owned a house lot in a new subdivision south of 23rd Street, and they were ready for new architectural ideas and building practice that Hyman championed, and that Kenny Frank, an important Lawrence contractor, could build. The Zimmerman House was one of Hyman's earliest projects, a long nationally prominent architectural practice, which he still leads today in Spokane, Washington, in his mid-90s. What made the Zimmerman House so modern and shocking at the time? To the viewer, it did not have the traditional exterior ornamentation of a commonly known house style that hid the structural system. It had no gables, instead, to the dismay of many people, the architect employed an umbrella structural system as an ornamentation, which carried a nearly flat roof on a two-story house, divided the house into four sections, expressed how the modular interior was laid out, and provided the umbrella infrastructure for both the unorthodox illustration on the exterior, and the walls, doors, and hanging stairs on the interior. On the inside, the space flowed freely, with as few walls as possible. Light poured into the interior from large windows, especially the north, two-story window wall. Building materials and the detailed construction were celebrated."
Gotta wrap it up here.
Okay. Likely it, or nothing like it, doesn't matter, what is, what it is in that, in short, makes it thoroughly modern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the letter, too, from Dr. Domer. Any other public comment on this item? Or are you gonna do the other houses, of course? Okay, so, I'll move to close the public hearing. Motion made by Mayor Sodin, seconded by Commissioner Herbert, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, so back to the commission for discussion. That was really helpful, having the interior pictures of the property on Nebraska Street show just how unusual and amazing it is.
That is a wonderful staircase.
Yeah.
I like your description of it better, I'm just trying to play it safe.
I appreciate the new property owner coming forward and indicating what she's doing to the property, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
It looks like to me that there's been a lot of work done by everybody from our staff, you know, the public, obviously, the property owners, HRC, and just a lot of work on making sure that everything's been considered here, so I think we proceed with the designations.
Okay, I want to ask our clerk here, do we need to do five separately, or can we do them all at the same time? So, if we, if we lump them all together, do we still need to read out, can we just do the ordinances, or do we have to do the ordinance number, landmark designation, and the address? What would you prefer?
I mean, all of that is, I mean, the landmark designation is part of the ordinance, so, I mean, I think you're fine just reading the ordinance number.
Okay.
So, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 9403, 9404, 9405, 9406, and 9423.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Amick, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for the help, and let us know how we can lump those together, Sherry. Okay, so now we're on, thank you all for coming out, too, congratulations on getting your house, I hope that we hear more about maybe the National Historic Register in the future. Alright, so now we're on to number five, where we're gonna talk about, let's see, how can I sum this up? Carrying of unconcealed firearms is prohibited in city buildings. So, this is open carry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner, I'm Toni Wheeler, the City Attorney, and I'll be providing an overview of the ordinances in front of you. As you know, the city has prohibited the carrying of concealed and unconcealed firearms in city buildings under a temporary exemption provided for in the Personal and Family Protection Act. On January 1 of 2018, the city's ability to carry, to ban the carrying of concealed firearms will expire, because the city will not have the adequate security measures required by the statute at all public entrances to city buildings. But, the state law will allow the city to continue to ban unconcealed carrying of firearms, provided the appropriate signage is installed. The ordinance number 9421 incorporates the relevant state law, again, this is current state law, the city is not adopting an ordinance that is making this happen, this is current state law. It incorporates the relevant state law provisions related to the unconcealed carrying of firearms, and it establishes a penalty for a person who enters a posted building after being refused entry, and one who refuses to leave after being asked to leave. The second ordinance is a companion one to that, it, provided that the first ordinance is adopted, then it requires that all buildings owned or leased by the city be designated as prohibiting the carrying of unconcealed firearms, and then it also strikes references to our temporary exemption, since that will go away on December 31st. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Alright, any questions for staff?
Toni, question, this is buildings, and buildings defined as four walls and a front door, right? How about a park?
No, we cannot, we cannot regulate weapons in anything other than buildings.
Unbelievable.
Since 2013, the Kansas Legislature has really limited local units of government's ability to regulate in the area of guns and knives, and they have stated very strongly that they believe it's in the best interest of the state that there be uniform laws, and that the Kansas Legislature state what those laws can be.
So, even if we have a fenced-in area that, like, driving into one of our maintenance facilities where there's a big fence around it, so they can stand outside with an unconcealed weapon?
Yes. Only in buildings are we permitted to regulate the unconcealed carrying of firearms, buildings, and that excludes garages.
Any garage? Even of our large Quonset-type huts, or?
The statute says that it excludes facilities used for the parking of vehicles.
Oh, my.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go to public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you, members of the City Commission, for this opportunity to comment. My name is Lena Carter Brook, and I'm a lifelong resident of Lawrence. I'm also here as a volunteer for Moms Demand Action, a nationwide bipartisan grassroots effort to reduce gun violence in our communities. We support the ordinances you're considering, which would prohibit people from openly carrying guns in the city of Lawrence building. I personally find the idea of seeing someone walking around with a visible firearm frightening, and wish it were possible to prohibit it throughout the city. Research shows that open carry can increase the likelihood of violence. Multiple studies have found that the presence of a visible gun makes people more aggressive, and with the likelihood of aggressive behavior elevated, open carry makes it more likely that a disagreement will become a violent conflict. Many law enforcement agencies across the nation have expressed opposition to civilians openly carrying guns in public, because it can dangerously impede the ability of police to react effectively in crisis situations. And numerous polls indicate that the majority of Americans are opposed to open carry. We think it's important to be proactive and provide leadership on the issue of gun violence prevention in our communities, and we appreciate your efforts to do so. Besides urging you to pass these ordinances, I would also like to invite everyone to observe December 14th as a day of remembrance for the 20 children and six adults who died in the Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting in Newtown, Connecticut. That day marks the fifth anniversary of the tragedy, and it's a reminder that it's imperative, and never too early or too late, to do what we can to prevent gun violence in our community.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, I'm, my name's Ron Barrett, I'm just an average, everyday dad and neighbor. I think the idea of solving our differences with violence, or threat of violence, is antithetical to what most people hold dear in life, and certainly in, in a place like Lawrence, so I can't urge you enough to pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Ron. Any other public comment? Anything else? You don't have to speak if you don't want to. Okay, well, let's go ahead and bring it back for commission discussion.
One more question.
Sure.
Toni, as reading all the staff report, it talks about city buildings, is that just city of Lawrence buildings, or does that cover governmental buildings? Any governmental buildings? Or is it just city property?
This, this ordinance addresses city buildings. Other governmental entities can make decisions about their buildings.
Okay, so, they will have that opportunity also?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Just making sure, I think we ought to encourage them.
Any other commission discussion?
We need to pass this.
Yeah. I think one of the big, big things is that we have a lot of conversations in, in here where there's considerable disagreement on issues that people take very personally, and I can't see somebody walking up to the podium, wearing a handgun, being productive towards a civil conversation. There's, there's no need for that. So, anything we can do to, to make a statement very, very clear and very, very public, I think it's important that we do.
Well, I appreciate the members of the public coming forward this evening, but I want to personally thank our staff for the work that they've done in making sure that we've brought the right language forward in ordinance forum, and, I mean, thanks for all the answers to questions you've gotten from me, and going through those opinions I ask you to look at, so, but I just want to personally thank you for that. So, thanks, Toni.
Any other commissioner comments?
Let's do this.
Okay. Who wants to read the motion?
Take it. I would move that we adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9421, concerning the carrying of unconcealed firearms in any city-owned or city-leased building, and ordinance number 9425, authorizing the city manager to designate and post the required signs in buildings owned or leased by the city, as buildings where the carrying of unconcealed firearms is prohibited.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Amick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, so, we're gonna continue on, yeah, thank you for coming out tonight, and for your patience during our agenda. Okay, so now we're on to number six, so we're gonna have an update on the environmental remediation of farmland.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Brandon McGuire, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm just gonna pull up the agenda again. We, we heard on public comment last week some concerns about the additional temporary discharge at the farmland- at the farmland remediation project site. And the mayor directed the staff to put an FAQ page together, an informational webpage together. So we worked on developing that over the last week, and I wanted to just make sure that everybody had a chance to review that and then provide kind of a, I guess, a brief overview of the communications that have gone on around this issue as it's emerged over the last couple of months. I think what I've heard more than anything is concerns about -- is about those communications and how the authorizations were provided for this additional discharge. So I'll keep it very brief, just to a couple of talking points this evening, and then we'll stand for questions. Throughout the last couple of months, we've reported on the emerging status of the farmland remediation project through the city manager's report. And we've tried to do so transparently. I think anytime you are transparent, you open yourself up for additional opportunities to create questions and concerns. And I think we've made an attempt to address those over the last couple of months, but I think that we may have created some confusion where we could have communicated a little bit more effectively. So I will refer to some of those times when Tom did share those updates on the manager's report. So as was reported by the city manager previously, the city met with KDH officials back in August to discuss the emerging issues with the farmland project and the containment status of the remediation water. I won't go into all the details of those issues. I would refer people to that FAQ webpage and to the previous city manager's reports to learn more about those issues because it can be kind of an exhausting talk. At the end of August, KDHE authorized a six-month shutdown of the water collection system. And at that time, this was reported to the City Commission on the city manager's report. The city continued, in the meantime, to develop the land application program for the remediation project to maximize the volume of water that could be put to beneficial reuse on farm fields. The amount of the water that can now be applied to area farms by the distribution line has increased from what was back then about 4 million gallons to now 11 million gallons. And I would like to credit our -- especially our Utilities Department staff for developing that additional inventory of farmland. As the city manager reported, even with the ability to apply the additional 7 million gallons, the storage system would not be able to accommodate the collection of water over the next year. And to give you some context and reference, over the last year, the collection system gathered over 10 million gallons of water. So every year, there's an expectation that we'll get at least 10 million gallons of water in that collection system. The city advised KDHE and the city commission -- the city staff advised KDHE and the city commission that it would be pursuing a hauling operation to apply additional remediation water to additional farmland that is not served by the distribution line. This posed a detrimental environmental and financial impact, as well as concerns about the safety of the transportation system. KDHE responded to the city's hauling plan with an alternative plan. The Secretary of KDHE, KDHE Secretary authorized a temporary limited discharge from the farmland site. This discharge was granted under the existing MPDES permit. That's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. And the effluent from the additional discharge would be in addition to the regularly occurring permitted outflow from that site. KDHE's modeling determined that the additional discharge would have a negligible effect on the use of the Kansas River. And we can say that the data that we've gathered over the first several days of the operation confirmed that the impact is negligible. The additional discharge authorization was received by staff on October 20th, although the letter itself is dated October 4th, which understandably creates some confusion about the sequence of events. After receiving the authorization letter, city staff developed a plan to comply with the parameters of the temporary authorization. And KDHE indicated its approval of that plan on November 4th. At the November 7 city commission meeting, the city manager announced the temporary authorization during his report to the city commission. And then on November 10th, city staff notified our neighbors downstream Water One, and it was a staff-to-staff communication that the city was getting ready to begin the additional discharge from the farmland site and that it would have a negligible impact on their use of the river. In addition, we've had many ongoing conversations with Water One, KDHE, additional agencies and organizations that have an interest in the river. And we are providing our monitoring data to those agencies for a daily update. We are monitoring the intake at the Kansas River for Water One and providing sampling analysis of the water quality there at that point in the river. We're also funding a USGS monitoring point at De Soto. It was previously taken offline, I think due to a lack of funds to support that monitor. But we've reinvested in that so that we can monitor the downstream impact that the farmland discharge may contribute to. I would say that all of that additional monitoring, both at the Water One intake and at De Soto, has a pretty minimal impact on the city's budget. So that's not coming at a great cost to the city. So as I said, we've received several questions and concerns over the past two weeks since it was announced that we'd be undertaking this additional discharge. We've developed the FAQ webpage. It is linked here on the city agenda, but it's also accessible from the homepage of the city's website. We are using that as a way to disseminate a lot more information about the long-term remediation project and about this immediate situation with the temporary additional discharge. That's, again, a brief overview, but my intention was to keep it brief and kind of open it up for any additional questions that the city commissioners or the public may have at this point.
Yeah, the FAQ page is very good. Thank you. Okay, any questions for staff?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the 7 million gallons? Is that from the distribution line?
Yes, so optimistically, we -- you know, if conditions hold for us and if conditions are favorable, we believe we can apply up to 11 million gallons on farm fields served directly by the distribution line.
And what period of time is that 11 million gallon?
It's going on now, in the next couple of weeks. So it'll be--
But, I mean, is that per year, per month, per?
It -- well, it's for this year. A lot of these farmers work on leased land, which has contributed to some of the issues that got us to this point. For example, there was a sod farm that was leased, and it's no longer leased by that tenant.
So that 11 million gallons would be from now until a year from now?
Until the spring, yes. And then the discharge or the land application process works or it initiates after the fall harvest. And then we're, you know, at that point, we're racing the weather. We don't put the water down when the ground is frozen. So we get as much as we can down immediately after the crops are harvested. And then if there's any left, then I think we might do some application in the spring, in the early spring, before the crops are planted.
Thank you.
What other tests are you conducting on the water?
I might refer that to Dave Wagner, our Director of Utilities.
Lisa, we are -- we have performed in the past what's called a total contaminant scan. So there's, you know, and I can't even tell you the exact number that is actually on that.
121.
Thank you. I thought you might be able to do that for me. So 121 different parameters of metals, toxins, and other things, contaminants of concern. So we've performed one of those scans on accumulation of the farmland water recently. We're actually, we've gone out for testing, additional testing, as we're going along in each one of the containment areas that we're doing, and we're getting those results as well. So we don't anticipate anything of significance other than nitrogen to be found in those results that would be consistent with what the history of the site is, as well as what we have gotten on the most recent result.
I would like to point out that what you're analyzing for, to be specific, is PCBs--
Yes.
-- pesticides, organics, inorganics, semi-volatiles--
Yes, VOCs, yes.
And all your heavy metals, as well as mercury, lead, and chrome.
Yes.
And what's a little bit unusual about this is that when you're in a remediation project like this, you typically do not do that. So the city is going way above and beyond what would typically be required by the state.
Yeah, I think we want some assurance that we're relying here with what we're doing.
So I'm really pleased to see you guys doing that.
I think we're being cautious.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, well, let's go to public comment then. Or Brandon, were you finished with your -- okay. So, public comment, come on up to the microphone and speak your thoughts, please. Say your name, sign in.
I'm a longtime resident of Lawrence. Actually, worked at the farmland plant many years ago. Could I just ask, what's the approximate concentration of nitrogen?
You gotta direct questions to the Commissioners. So go ahead and ask all your questions, and then we'll get them answered by staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
The concentration of nitrogen in this?
Okay, did you have any other--
Discharged water?
I have the results here.
Okay. Did you have any other questions before we start answering, or?
Well, yes. Another question is, what is the quantity that is anticipated to be discharged to the river over the next year?
Okay. Okay.
I guess that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so did you want to?
Well, the analytical results, the most recent ones, the -- for nitrates, it's ranging from 216 to 339 parts per million, or milligrams per liter. That's directly coming off the farmland. Then once it hits the river at our discharge point, that number drops down to 113 to 229 parts per million. And that was dated through the 17th, so you might have some other, some newer data on that.
Lisa, looking at today's report, the actual concentrations have gone down at the outfall. Around nitrate, nitrites, around 82 milligrams per liter. And the same at the point that it reaches the river. Ammonia, the OO1A, outfall, the designated outfalls, running about 23. So we've actually seen a significant reduction as we've gone down on the pool farm. So that's today's results. So it's even better than what you had mentioned, so.
Are we able to post those kinds of testing results online so that people can?
You know, we've been making those because they're kind of dynamic. We're sharing those with anybody that asks.
So they need to send you an email to ask to be updated?
Yeah, you know, we're not being secretive with it.
No.
It's just, it's moving a lot.
But it sounds like Jim Brook wants to sign up.
We haven't posted them as a matter of practice, but we're certainly, I think, we're being transparent about it.
Sure. Well, I think Jim Brook wants to sign up for it. That's just a guess.
Sure.
And then there was the question of if there's any idea of the quantity that's going to be discharged to the river over time.
The current estimates are, again, we're hoping we can land apply up to 11 million gallons. The remainder of the volume within storage would be about 19 million gallons, and we'd hope to go to empty before April 1 on that.
Oh, okay.
So that'll provide us some time to get into the existing tanks, do some asset infrastructure assessment on what their condition is. They have not been looked at in 10 years or longer. Some of them may probably even longer than that. So we've got some inspections to do on the infrastructure as well.
And it looks like we're talking to consultants, perhaps, to -- I don't want to try to dig that up.
We have a request for proposal out to secure consultant services to help us with a redo of the environmental management plan, if you want to look at it that way, or the remediation plan, and help us come up with longer-term solutions, as well as what the options might be. Maybe redo some characterization of the site if needed, but we're looking for that. I anticipate we'll be under contract probably sometime in March, is our current estimate, to actually perform that work, and then we'll start looking at solutions.
I don't know if Commissioner Larson is interested in being our expert that deals directly. It seems like you already are. Are you interested in continuing that role? Because obviously, you're the one with the expertise in this kind of thing.
I mean, I've been talking to Dave.
Right. We gave a tour and to Lisa last week and been giving her some updates based on questions she has, so.
And with the RFP, will you be involved with that group?
They've got a key professor that's actually spearheading that, which is real good.
I'm glad that you're our expert onboard.
I'm going to second that. I really appreciate your work.
We've appreciated her input, too.
You know, what staff has done, I was a little bit leery at first when all this started coming out, I have to admit, and concerned. And so when I met with staff last week, as well as this week, and toured the facility and talked to them in depth about what they're doing, you know, from my standpoint, if I were them, I would not have done anything differently if I were still in that business. So I really appreciate that. And they're definitely looking, both inside and outside, for answers, which I also appreciate that very much. They've been very forthright in how they're handling this, other than a few glitches on the management side as far as getting the information out to the public. That's something that we can definitely do better in the future. But technically, they're doing what's right, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm proud of the team that we put together, both, you know, some of the public work staff, as well as utility staff as well. It was a difficult thing to go through, I think, but I think we're, we've got it to a point that it's stable. We've got a lot of work to do yet, and a lot of unknowns, I think, so I'm sure you'll hear about it in the future.
Dave, I do have a question, and maybe for you or Brandon, but the amount of water that we make available from the farmland site that's being used for agriculture purpose?
Yes.
We regulate, or the state regulates, the amount of water that can be made available to, you know, a certain amount of acreage. Is that based on crop production, or is that based on just the land itself, the amount of land?
Actually, both, Commissioner Amick. It's, we use actually the same general formulas that we use for the beneficial reuse program for bio solids, which also has nutrients in it. So it's basically an agronomic nutrient management practice. So we take soil analysis before we apply it. We look at the concentrations in the water, and then we only apply what we expect to be the agronomic demands of the crop, so we don't have any of the nitrogen moving off the site. It's managed, so we have buffer areas, we stay away from water wells, and so it's a really rigorous program to make sure that we're applying what's needed, but no more.
Early in the process, we had talked about, or staff talked about, the change in the crops that were being grown was having an effect on the amount of water that was going to the various farms and such. If that crop production had not have changed, would we, with the amount of water that was coming from the old farmland site, our problems would be taken care of?
I wouldn't necessarily say that. I haven't really looked back, Commissioner Amick, on that. There might be some speculation on my part. The accumulation's been happening over several years, I think, from that perspective, and it's just gotten a little further behind a little bit. So as we've moved along until it was finally full this year. I think, obviously, where they had five different crops of sod material that could take about 220 pounds of nutrients a cycle, was a lot more capacity to accept the materials than what we have, what we had on the site. We've actually recovered some of that now with renegotiation, and we've deployed additional equipment over there that we're actually using on the Waukerosa wastewater plant that we happen to have prepared, and it's basically large sprinklers, so we can get to land that we couldn't get onto before. So we've hooked, nooked, and crannyed some solutions over to expand that a little bit, and some of it, we're still going, I wonder if that'll work or not. So that's why we're saying up to 11 million gallons. We'll let you know, so we'll keep you on edge about that.
Well, in the areas to the north where I think primarily all that water was, or has been going the last several years, did we have, and I don't know how many acres that were kind of taken out of production, too?
Right. There was some land that the physical-- Right, there were some land that the, the physical equipment just didn't, it wasn't maintained and didn't get to any longer, or the, the land had changed ownership, and because we had the, the convenient one of the sod farm, some of those arrangements and stuff had, had lapsed, and so we hadn't really had to go out and use that before. So since then, we've gone out and beaten the bushes again and gotten renegotiated land agreements. We're looking at options. And as we do that study for the, the remediation disposal and what options we have to deal with the issue in the long haul, I think we'll certainly look at a land application and what is its cost? Is it sustainable? What are the changing parameters? There's a lot of variables to that equation, but, I mean, we're certainly going to look at, and we have for the short term, maximizing that capability of getting over there and beneficially reusing those nutrients for, for beneficial use.
Well, it seems to me, it seems to me that, that we have something that somebody in the agricultural business obviously needs-
Yes.
-or pays to, you know, nitrogenate the water that, that they're at least putting down for application. Seemed to me that we ought to be looking through our CIP at, is there a way to make that available to, you know, more people, you know, in that area?
Right.
You know, to make it available to them for their farms.
Yeah.
It also seems to me it's, it's sure a hell of a lot better than trucking that stuff all over everywhere-
Yes.
-by running it through a pipe.
Yeah, obviously, we were not fond of that option, and it was the state. And I think it was a, it was a really good solution that, with our, with the people we work with at the state, that we could come to that resolution for this one kind time event until we can get our, get some other options on the table.
Well, as always, it sounds like our staff is five steps ahead of me, so good to work.
I know with the trucking, they were looking at almost 200 trucks, truckloads a day?
If, if we, if we did the limit, if you were, happened to have your front door on the route, you'd, every three minutes, a truck would go by. Half the time, it'd be full, half the time, it would be empty. So that's what it would take to run about a half million gallons a day.
If you want to fight a battle, send those trucks to North Lawrence.
Let's get back to public comment.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment? Jim, come on up again.
I, I'd just like to say that the numbers that I heard are reassuring, and, and like Commissioner Larson, I agree that, from what I've seen and what I know of these, of these activities, this city's been doing the right thing. So I'm comforted by the presentation and their obvious understanding of, of what's going on and what they have to deal with. I, I do wonder if, if we get into a need to, to truck, if we have examined any possibility of treatment of the water to reduce the volume considerably. But that's a sort of a technical type of question. I'm sure that we'll continue to try to do what is practical. What's been done so far, again, seems very reasonable to me.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And don't forget to give him your email so you can keep up with those numbers.
Oh, you bet.
Any other public comment on this item? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the commission. It doesn't look like there's any action. I guess we'll be looking for the RFP for approval in the future. Do you know what the timeline is on, on that?
I would anticipate having that for recommendation.
In March.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other final discussion?
Just say thank you for the work y'all are doing. Thank you very much to Commissioner Larson for working on this and applying her expertise and understanding to it. I really appreciate that. It's very reassuring all the way around.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Okay, well, so that concludes our realer agendas, and now we're on to commission items. Do commissioners have any items they would like to discuss?
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Be safe this weekend.
At least, the weather's going to be good, it looks like.
It's going to be great. Everybody in Lawrence, Kansas, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, one and their families. You say.
I've got one. There's a new Partners for Smart Growth meeting in February, and there's a track on affordable housing. This is the local government commission that's doing it, and I'm thinking about going. What, this is one of those things that's subject to the approval by the commission, so I wanted to bring it up and let everybody consider it.
Is this a conference, or is this a local thing?
It's a conference. It's, yeah, it's, it's in San Francisco. It's on February 1st to 3rd. And there's a, as I say, the early registration ends on November 29th, so I wanted to bring it up tonight and just see what everybody thought. I'm very pleased that the voters have supported the Affordable Housing Sales Tax. We're going to be doing the, the planning with the, the housing study. Well, the housing study will help inform the plan, but I, I'm interested in going to this meeting, too, so I just wanted to bring it up and let people know.
You might want to talk to Diane, because from what we heard yesterday, that it sounds like affordable housing is going to be more in your Will House and not in Casey's anymore.
Yeah, I, I meant, I've mentioned that to Diane as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that, that was the same conference I was looking at potentially going to for affordable housing, so.
I just wanted to know if it's okay with everybody. Fine.
You said it's in February? I ought to go to.
February.
Sorry.
Nice try.
You gotta look for one in Hawaii, I guess, that you go to. All right, any other commission items? Okay, so now we're on to the city manager's report.
Yes, our first item here is related to a legislative matter with the, the tax bill that's being discussed in Congress. We wrote a few letters of, of concern to us is the exclusion of tax-exempt status on municipal bonds. And then there was also some inclusion of, of the repeal of historic tax credits and new markets tax credits in here that could have an economic development effect. So we did send letters to our congressional delegation, and those are included in here, and we continue to post those, that information on our website. We have some utility billing performance indicators there for you with the October report. And our staff is recommending on the utility Dropbox that we cease accepting utility bill payments through the grocery store Dropbox beginning at the end of this, this year to encourage customers to either come, you know, do that, that business online, or, or continue to have the payment option here at City Hall. So there's just a, a few customers that have utilized this. I know that you received some correspondence, and I wanted to make sure that you saw that was in front of you with, with regard to that issue.
Diane, could we look at possibly having that on a regular gen item, since you're asking for some action in it?
Yeah.
It says authorize staff to cease accepting utility bill payments.
Yes, we certainly would have time in December to bring that back if you'd like to have more discussion on it.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable taking action on it through the city manager's report.
We could certainly do that. The, you had also discussed the possibility of having a work session with regard to the low-income elderly, reduced utility rates, and so we just wanted to provide an update to you on that. We're looking to be bringing that back to you in the early part of 2018. The October monthly building permit report is provided there for you. Continue to be a strong year in that category. And then we've announced some changes with people who have some solid waste collection this week, affecting the Thursday and Friday routes that you can see there. No, no other customers would be affected by the changes. And then our staff did submit a, a heritage trust fund grant application to the Kansas Historical Society for the mausoleum at the Oak Hill Cemetery. And so we wanted to make you aware of that. Hopefully, we will be successful, but the, they will announce those awards in early February. And then on another front, we did receive a Elizabeth Schultz Environmental Fund grant to extend our outreach in the, in youth with Prairie Park Nature Center. And so that's reported there for you. And then coming up here on future agendas for you, we have on your December 5th meeting, a vacation of a pedestrian easement there, which is a routine item. And then a discussion with you about designating a facility, a site for the police facility, and then also discussion of some construction methods and options that you'll have there from staff. And then coming up, your work sessions that are scheduled in December, we have a couple of updates for you on the proposed grocery store project on New Hampshire Street. And then also, there will be a update from the developers that are proposing a downtown conference center. So that will be happening in your summer meeting. And, and finally, I just wanted to wish you all, have a Thanksgiving, and thanks for all of your service and work on behalf of the city. We really appreciate it.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, too. All right, so now we're on to calendar. I was just looking on here to verify in 2018 that we have, we still have three city commission- no, we only have two city commission meetings. The first week is canceled, and then the 8th is a Monday. That's when we seat the new commission. And then we go back to the 16th, a regular, that's a regular meeting, not a work session.
We might add to the calendar, I, I don't know that there will be three commissioners there so much, but just for kind of general public interest, they might want to engage with this. Friday, December 1st, from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, it'll be here in this commission room is, is the next meeting of the transient guest tax board. Last week, we received, I think it was 27 applications for, for how that money, we have, we have $150,000, yeah, $150,000 that we allocate out of transient guest tax to various programs. And this year, we had nearly $280,000 in requests. So it's going to, unfortunately, that, you know, that means about as much is going to get funded as doesn't. And so, in that it's a public meeting, the public may want to be there for that and, and see that process play out. So that's Friday, December 1st, 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, right here in this room.
Thank you. Any other calendar items? Okay, well, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Sudden, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks all for coming out, sticking in, or sticking through, sticking with it.